All right, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, it is Tuesday, February 23rd at 5:30. We have a quorum in council chambers. We have a full council with Councilmember Jackson being with us virtually. It is 5:30, and I'm calling this meeting to order. The very first item we're going to do is executive session. City Council shall convene in the closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 to conduct an annual performance evaluation of the city manager as required by his employment agreement. It is 5:30, and we are in executive session. We'll note for the public, regardless of how long our executive session lasts, we will start our regular meeting at 6:30. Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It is Tuesday, February 23rd. We are out of executive session, and we are moving on to item number three, which is take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. I believe in Colin, we need to see Councilmember Jackson. So in executive session, which we got, we started at 5:30 and we got out of at 6:21, we discussed the first six months of our city manager, and our council members would like to make a comment. Councilmember Jackson?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I think one of the best decisions we've made as a council was the hiring of Mr. Hoffman as our city manager. It was evident during the interview process that he was very well skilled and qualified, and he has not let us down by coming in and working full force with everything that he could to make sure that we were able to communicate with our citizens, with the staff, and with the council, and exceptionally well with, you know, the reorganizations that he put forward for us, and with all the wonderful things that have been stated lately because during this pandemic, as well as the storm that we just had, he really came through for us with the help of the complete staff, and I'm just very pleased and thankful that we have him here to help lead our city through all the different changes and things we're going through. So hats off to you, Paul.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. When we hired Mr. Hoffman, or when we interviewed for his position, we had quite a few areas that we wanted to see improved in our city administration. We had worked on those in the past, but we were not seeing the level of improvement that we were, that we wanted. We hired Mr. Hoffman, and it has been an extraordinary six months in his ability to meet every one of those areas and make dramatic improvements, and I think we, all of us, are very, very proud of him.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Well, I certainly concur with the previous statements. I'm particularly impressed by the fact that he's taken council's priorities and is focused on those priorities to create consistency in our city government that is showing the fruits of those labors in a very precise way, and for that, I'm much appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson. Councilmember Rogers?
And I do follow the words of the other council members, but I did want to mention the, one thing that I'm extremely proud of, of the hiring of Paul, is not only just the communication, but he has changed this, the city has more of like an open arms for the citizens. They're, the attitude is more welcoming. They want to hear, hear from everyone. They want to take care of your issues, and I think that, that, that step to better customer service has just been a huge leap, and I think that I'm very proud of being part of the hire, but I think our citizens are very happy with what we've got going. Thank you, Paul, for what you've given us.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I'm blessed, so I can just say ditto, ditto, ditto. But I want to thank Paul. He's, he's met all of our expectations as a city and more, and I feel very honored to support him in all his endeavors, and Paul, I've just got to say you're doing an outstanding job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Don't worry, I get to be last, and I want the staff, the, we, in our closed session, we talked about what's happened over the last six months, which for some of us feels like it's been about six years in the last six months, but we have a full-time police chief. We don't have an interim police chief. We have a planning department that has a person in each slot, and all of that was done within the budget, and the changes that have been made were made instantly. We could feel a difference in the communication with council and with the citizens, and I just want to add my support to the excellent job that you've done, and I've enjoyed working with you the last six months, and I look forward to working with you as long as my term lasts. With that, we have a motion. Council, Mayor Protem Nelson?
Madam Mayor, I move to provide the city manager with a highly favorable performance review and grant him a one-time allotment of 40 additional hours of annual leave and provide dependent coverage for health insurance, insurance, or an equivalent contribution to his retirement fund.
Second?
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
That is approved unanimously. Let's have a round of applause.
Thank you very much, Mary Council.
He really doesn't like doing that. He prefers to talk about his great staff. Okay, we are going to get going on our regular meeting. I have to read this sentence because I plan on abusing it tonight. "The city of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign," emphasis on the realign, "regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment." Is, we are in regular session. We're on the top of page two. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise, we will say the pledge to the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please remain standing. We're honored to have Reverend Bob Long, who also serves as one of our police chaplain, and he has agreed to do our invocation tonight. Pastor Long?
Thank you. I too would like to commend our city manager. As you know, I come by once a week to pray, and he always prays with us, and as a matter of fact, it's a blessing to be able to pray for those in authority, all of you. The Bible commends us to do that, recommends for us to do that, so that we can live peaceable and quiet lives in all honesty. So I pray for you tonight. But as I start, I have a little booklet that's called Seek God For the City, and there's a prayer in here for the city, and I want to pray that before I pray the rest of my prayer. And this is to God, of course. "You have promised to do vast and precious things amidst the cities and peoples of the earth. We can only find courage to pray great things beyond our personal needs as you strengthen us. Give us prayers, large and small, that call forth your coming days of praise. We are standing watch, earnestly believing that you will complete what you desire to do in our community. Cause your name to be spoken of with praise in faraway places for what you do in our midst. Grant us stamina to stick by our post, asking, watching, and thanking you." Lord God, as we pray that, we pray for one another. We count it a privilege to pray for those that are in authority over us in the city of Bastrop. So I pray for our mayor and city council, and of course, our city manager, and all those employees of the city. Bless them and keep them and watch over them, and Lord, give them the wisdom and knowledge and discernment that they need to run the city. And once you give them that, give them that grace to carry it out and the faith to continue on in difficult times. Lord, we thank you that you have brought us through many difficult times. Some of us look back to the fire, but this year, with COVID-19, we thank you that you've brought us through that, and this recent weather that was very difficult and difficult on the city and the, those who work for the city. Lord, we trust you to bring us through all things. You're our hope, you're our faith, and you're our grace, and Lord, we just ask that you bring peace on this meeting and upon this city. Let this city be a city on a hill that shines its light beyond our borders, but we thank you for who we have here. We pray for our first responders, our fire department, our police department, and all those who work for and with the city. And Lord, we thank you for your blessings, and we ask blessings to be on those who are here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You may be seated. So I'm going to start off like I promised I would, and that is, we are moving to item 7D. Item 7D says, "Receive a presentation for a life-saving award recognition." Chief Rosales?
All right. Mayor, council, members, city manager, and families, it's an honor and a privilege to join you this evening as we collectively recognize this group of individuals that we're going to bring forward. I am humbled by the opportunity to share my thoughts as well as our collective appreciation and admiration for tonight's honorees. On January 8th, our crews responded to Phil Malley for cardiac arrest. The fire crews arrived on scene, assisted ACAD and EMS with medical interventions. Prior to our arrival, Mr. Tasher, did I get that right? Close enough, I'm sorry. The manager of Phil Malley started CPR and continued until crews arrived. While on scene, the patient had what we call Ross C., or spontaneous return of circulation. We assisted with Starflight landing in the parking lot of Phil Malley, and the patient was transported to the hospital. Our patient, we identified later as Mr. Steve Towns. I've spoken to his wife, who's Ms. Towns, who sends her heartfelt thank you to everyone that was involved. She was unable to make it tonight because Mr. Towns is being transferred unexpectedly. They, she's been waiting for this, they've been waiting for like three weeks for this, from Austin to Dallas to a neuro rehab center. Tonight's honorees will receive awards commemorating and memorizing their respective contributions to our community. As these individuals are called forth, I ask them to consider Payne's words. These plaques and proclamations only symbolize the great triumphs these honorees have received in our noblest of professions. They merely are a token of the collective enthusiasm for the dedicated self-service, self-sacrifice, and desire you have shown to make our community, our state, our nation, an ideal place in which to live and work, simply a better place. Do not view this evening's recognition too cheaply. Please understand that we acknowledge that what you have done means so much more than what we can convey in a simple certificate. At this time, I would like to call forward Mr. Mark Trasher? Trasher? I'll fix that here in a minute. I'm sorry.
Let me get this out. Mr. Trash?
Thank you, sir. Here's the certificate. Are we going, Colin, do you want to take a picture? Yes. Good? Thank you, sir. If you want to just, oh, got one more? Oh. Assistant Fire Chief Eric DeArmit? And also Mr. Steve Towns. He was, like I said, he was unable to make it tonight, but we have a award, and I'd like to read it. By the, this certificate of resilience is presented to Mr. Steve Towns by the city of Bastrop for your fortune in fighting to overcome a life-threatening event, and in recognition of your courage and positive mindset as you persevere throughout your recovery. It's presented today, and here in a minute, I'll get all the firefighters to, that were there, will sign this, and we will send it to Mr. Towns in Dallas. So, other than that, on behalf of the Bastrop Fire Department and the city of Bastrop, I wish to extend my heartfelt congratulations to tonight's award recipients and the countless others like them who choose day-to-day efforts, maybe somewhat more mundane, but yet nonetheless noble for their continuing efforts to keep this city of Bastrop safe. Thank you, guys.
Mayor, we have one more?
Oh.
Yes, sir. We're not done, Chief Rosales. Thank you, Chief Rosales. We're going to hear a little bit more about Chief Rosales in, in a little bit. Okay, so we did 7D. We're going to go on to, go back to 7A, Mayor's report. I have two, Colin's going to pull that up. I have two things, really one thing, and then also, I think the city manager's going to cover the other. Bastrop County is one of seven counties that has been approved for individual assistance. So that means lots of paperwork, and Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery has packets to help citizens fill out their information, but what I can tell you, the most important thing you can do is, number one, take pictures. Take pictures of the damage. Make sure you take pictures. Did I mention take pictures? And number two, save your receipts. We need pictures and receipts, and they can fill things out. I was on a SOC call today, and they say that FEMA is not intended to make you whole. It's kind of the funding of last resort, but when you turn in those damages, it helps them get to the threshold, so you may be helping someone else, and you may find yourself in a position, because we also got an email, if your house has experienced over 15% of damage, there are some property tax things that can happen for you. But again, you cannot have that without completed paperwork, pictures, and receipts. So for anybody that's dealing with that, I, that's the kind of thing that you don't want to find out in two weeks because you, then it's too late. So with that, if you will go to the first page, not shockingly, it was a whole lot of snow. That first picture is February 15th, and that's at the street looking at my house, which was a whole, whole lot of snow. Underneath that, I thought it was interesting, was February 5th. There is no snow, and that is the Rotary Club making a donation to the Family Crisis Center. Rotary does great work, and it was a really neat project, and they asked me to come out and be a part of that presentation, but what a difference 10 days makes when you live in the city of Bastrop in the state of Texas. Then if you go look over on the right-hand side, last Friday, February 19th, Chief Rosales unexpectedly got his hands on some water, and we pulled together a small group of volunteers, and what you see is bags that were donated by HEB, and we were putting six bottles of water in each bag, and through our communications organization, we were able to send notices directly to the Zone 2 people who did not have a drop of water coming out, and sent to them, "Come by City Hall to get your water." We put the free water sign up on the marquee out by the convention center, the police department, hats off to them. They had some medical care folks that they were looking at, and they made deliveries of water to nursing homes and apartments, so we, it was a couple of pallets, and, and we made haste with those. But the picture that I'm saving for the last, Colin, if you'll go down, I thought he said his name was Ryan. The person standing next to me said his name was Brian, so I, we're just calling him a really great guy. Whenever you're doing volunteer things, it's always hard to get people to drive where they're supposed to drive, and it's like, look, we just loaded up all this water, please don't drive on the other side of the parking lot. Come over here near us. So we were trying to get this guy to come near us, and he really didn't want to do that. He finally got out of his car and said the following thing. "My mom and I live on property, and we have a well, and so we're okay, but we had these cases of water in our garage. We saw the Facebook post that you were giving away water, and we want this water to go to people who really need it." So we had people reverse donating water at our water distribution, and that, ladies and gentlemen, is what makes Bastrop, Bastrop. Had to share that story. Okay, if you go to the next page, you'll see that I pretty much didn't do anything but be on SOC calls. I did this afternoon interview Andy Griggs, and there is a country rewind tour. If you like country music, there is going to be a concert at Community Gardens on Saturday night with Darryl Worley, Brian White, and Andy Griggs. So, and the opening act is Winter Dawn, who is a 15-year-old Bastropian who's going to be the opening act, so, and there won't be any snow, and it's outside, you'll be able to spread out, and it should be a really nice evening. Upcoming events, very standard stuff. I'm not going to take time to go through, I'm on the next slide, Colin, not going to take time to go through this, but I do want to also bring to your attention, a lot of folks last week, when they were stuck in their house during the snow, became experts on the electric grid, so I wanted to share with you that ERCOT is having a hearing with the, up at the state Capitol, and it will be livestreamed on Thursday, February 25th at 9:00 a.m. So if you have never heard of ERCOT, or if you're now an expert on ERCOT, you might want to tune in to that presentation. That's all I have. Councilmember Peterson, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
Thanks, Mayor, but no, I don't have anything tonight.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, Mayor, like at last meeting, when you asked me about Main Street, and the meeting was the next day, so they are doing wonderful things. They're looking to expand the trashcans and the bike racks on the new Main Street going through. They don't have anything final yet for me to give you, but I'm real proud of the, the work that they're doing, and they're moving forward.
Great, thank you very much. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Just real quick, you know, the council has an emphasis on applying for any and all grants that might be of benefit to the city, and I wanted you to know from a regional perspective that CAPCOG has applied for several grants through Homeland Security, and two of them were of particular interest. One is a unmanned aerial vehicle, I think, I guess that's a drone to be used by the region for planning, operations, and security, and whatever other needs. It's interesting to, to find out that there are six that are owned by the state of Texas that are available throughout the state, and it's going to be very, very comfortable for us to have one in a region that is for our region. So that's more for, for the chief back there. So Chief Nagy, you're welcome. And the other, and the other was their, they've applied for a grant to enhance their training program there at CAPCOG for their law enforcement training, so that, that's a big boon for us as a region, and that's it for me.
Are you planning on speeding later, so you're sucking up to the police department? I mean, what's going?
No, this is, this is retro.
Okay, okay, all right. Councilmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take my little moments here to, and I think I will be speaking for the rest of this council as well, how extraordinarily proud we are of our city staff for the 24/7 work that went on during this last week, last, last week. So many of you were even staying downtown in our facilities so that you didn't have to drive home through the snow, and you didn't see your families, and it is just extraordinary to me, the amount of work you put in to keep our community safe and to keep our community in electricity and, and to solve the water problems. We didn't experience nearly the problems that other communities had, and I put that at y'all's doorstep, and I want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Councilmember Jackson?
Ditto, ditto, ditto. I am so proud to be a council member with the city of Bastrop and have such an outstanding and faithfully devoted staff working with us to make sure that the Bastropians are happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. You guys have perfectly teed up the city manager's report. We're moving on to item 7C, city manager's report. Mr. Hoffman?
Thanks, Mayor. Only two topics in tonight's city manager's report. One of them will be the city's response to the ice storm, but first, if you don't mind, wanted to give a bit of an update on the May 1st council election, which is just a few weeks away. We are now past the time period that folks could file for office or submit as a, as a write-in candidate. We have only one person up for place two, so Councilmember Rogers is unopposed for that position. We, we do have two folks who have filed for place four, the spot that Councilmember Ennis will be, will be vacating. We had the required drawing for place on the ballot on, on Monday of this week, and City Secretary Franklin orchestrated that, and candidate Jimmy Crouch will be in position one, and candidate Cheryl Lee will be in position two. As a matter of public information, the last day to vote, I'm sorry, the last day to register to vote is April the 1st. Early voting will begin on April the 19th, and early voting ends on April 27th, and Election Day is May 1st, and in council, I'll be scheduling with the candidates and orientation with the city manager sometime in March, and we will also schedule tours of city facilities depending on what, what the candidates are most interested in seeing, and I'll keep you up to date on that. As set up by the mayor, the next thing I'll talk about in the city manager report, and I'll probably spend more time on this city manager's report than I typically do, is a recap of the staff response to the February 14th through, I suppose, the 20th ice storm that affected the entire state of Texas and every city in the state of Texas. I'd like to particularly thank the city team here. Thank you, Mr. Ennis and Mr. Jackson and others for your, for your very kind and I think warranted comments. The last couple of days, I took the time to interview several city employees, about 20, I think, maybe a little more than 20, more than 20, Rebecca says, and actually did that on, on video. So we've got a documentation of the experiences and the priorities, and asked a few of them, next time if we do something like this, what could we have done to be better prepared or respond better? Got some great feedback on that, and council, at the end of this, I'll show you an example of that. I also interviewed Mayor Schrader this morning. She played a very important role in that, too, and got her the, gave her the opportunity to speak, and I'm not sure exactly- And I'm not sure exactly what we're going to do with those videos, but the idea is to let the public see that, and again, create, create the record of what that exemplary response was really all about. So I'm going to go through a few slides here, and first talk about how the staff team prepared for this event. We actually started hearing about this event before Friday, February the twelfth. But on Friday, we did participate in a preparation session. Stallwork in all of this was Chief, was Chief Rosales, who also serves as our emergency management coordinator. Chief Rosales understands emergency management and planning really very well, and did a good job of making sure we considered all the things we needed to be considering here. We obviously were paying attention throughout the whole week to updated information from the National Weather Service. We put a priority on how we would communicate with the city team, those who needed to come in, those who wouldn't come in. Tanya Cantrell played a big, important role in all of that. And in general, we made sure we were, we were ready. We called in all the fire shifts. We had police units on standby. We updated our on-call list with the Public Works Department. And I think, as it turned out, a very prescient, we were, we were well-prepared for a long duration of an, of an event. On Saturday, February thirteenth, we did hear from our wholesale power provider that we, we very well could expect rolling power outages. Not only were we interested in what LCPN had to tell us as a, as a power distributor ourselves with the Bastrop Power and Light System, we also recognized that many of our Bastrop residents aren't served by BPNL, but are served by Blue Bonnet. And so we put a lot of priority on staying on top of that as, as well. So what happened every day after that, no one, well, except for Chief Rosales, was at City Hall that week, but we did all communicate virtually. We did that every day. This is all of the city directors, but also people who aren't, aren't directors, but were involved in coordinating the response effort, were, were part of those calls. A lot of the business of the city continued to go on. It certainly wasn't as, as normal. We, we were prepared for the, the demand we would see on, on permits, especially plumbing permits. We were anticipating that there would be a lot of water line breaks. That actually did happen. Excuse me. And so we set up a system where we were communicating with plumbers in town to make sure they weren't too worried about coming into the office where no one was to pull a plumbing permit. And thank you to Jennifer Bills and her team for remotely managing all of that messaging. Of course, we had to put together the, the agenda for tonight's council meeting, and thank you, Anne and Victoria, for working on that. And we knew that we would get a whole, we would be getting phone calls from folks, and so we made the decision pretty early on to have phone calls to City Hall roll forward to, to cell phones. And we set up Tracy Chavez, who typically sits at the reception desk out front, to handle those calls from, from that desk. And more on that in, in, as we, as we go on. A priority in each of these meetings was, how were we staying in touch with the needs of the community? This was a harrowing event, a scary event, more than just an inconvenient event for many people in the region and many people in the city. And the prospect of going through a single-digit temperatures without, without electricity or water was, was something we wanted to pay attention to. Every department responded in that regard. Kudos to Rebecca Gleason in particular, and, and some folks she put together as a team to make sure that we were ready for eventualities there. We didn't end up using any city facility for a, for a warming station, but we were prepared for that. And we have, again, Rebecca, and Bonnie Pearson, and Kathy Danielson to thank for that. We did go into the week with a medical priorities list that we keep up to date as a matter of routine. We added to that list as the week went on. And our community resource officer, Tamara McIntyre, with the police department, with other help from the police department, every day reached out to those folks and made sure that they were, they were okay. As the week went on, and as problems got worse for our residents, the call volume increased. And so we had to line up more folks to have calls, especially from the utility billing area, rolled to their cell phones. And a lot of those people are in the room, Tracy Waldron, Tanya Cantrell, Anne, Anne Franklin helped with that as well, Kathy Franklin, again, Tracy Chavez, I'm leaving out names, but I think they're later in the PowerPoint. And they took in hundreds and hundreds of calls, and just an incredible number of calls, and took them in twenty-four-seven. In the middle of the night, I heard one of them say that their marriage suffered as a result of it, but I think they're probably okay. And we also paid attention to comments that we saw on social media. Rebecca spent a lot of time and a lot of hours, not just, we weren't just sending out messages through Facebook and Twitter and other methods. We were paying attention to what people were saying and asking, and we were doing our best to make sure we communicated back with those folks. Other routine things we did on those daily virtual meetings was keep each other all up to date on weather conditions and traffic conditions. We heard from people like Curtis Hancock in the field about how things were going. Through it all, people were willing to help and pitch in. A special shout-out to Chief Nagy with the police department, who every day said, "How can I help? Where is there a need? Where can I, where can I pitch in?" A big priority every day, too, was to make sure that the city employees who were here for days on end, and several of them were, were sheltered and well-fed, and department directors took the time to make sure that, that happened. And I don't think anyone went, went hungry. The accommodations weren't stellar, but everybody had a warm place. A little more specifically about the fire department. As I mentioned earlier, Chief Rosales isn't just the fire chief, he's also our emergency management coordinator, and did just a terrific job. The fire department responded to double the amount of calls that are normal for that time period. And council, I won't go through this list in a whole bunch of detail, it's there for you. We'll make sure you get a copy of this PowerPoint as well. I, I will point out that a whole lot of people, including the fire department, when it came to crunch time, and we really needed to get on top of the high demand that was impacting our water system, there were a whole bunch of folks who were out there looking for water leaks and assisting with solving, solving that, that problem. Also, go ahead, Colin, with the next slide. Thank you. Chief Rosales made sure that our city vehicles had access to fuel. That did become a challenge as, as we went on. Hmm, what I'm looking at is just a smidge different. We, we commandeered the convention center and turned it into Fire Station Three, and there's, there's a picture of it. I'm not sure if Kathy Danielson has seen that picture. If, if she hasn't, we can, we can keep it from her. Actually, she, she, she knew that we were using what she thinks is her building that way, and she was actually okay with it. The way Chief Rosales put it, what are we more interested in protecting, a million-dollar piece of fire apparatus or $400 worth of carpet in the convention center? And when he put it that way, the decision made sense. And what Chief Rosales and his team was reacting to was the uninhabitable conditions that were impacting Fire Station Two over at Tahitian. The, the guys couldn't operate there without, without heat, and so we needed to get them into a better spot, and not only them, but, but their equipment. And so the, the convention center suffered no worse for the wear, and, and a good time was had by all, actually. Go ahead and go to the next one. Thank you. I, I mentioned our preparation work on Friday, the twelfth. Part of that was a conversation I had with our director of BPNL, Curtis Irvin. And I asked Curtis, again, on Friday, before the storm hit, how were we going to do and what did he anticipate? And he told me not to worry, that the, the Bastrop Power and Light System was, was well-prepared for this. And, and he was right. The BPNL was absolutely well-prepared. We, we had a few weather-related outages, but I think we had a total of six. And, and all of those were responded to very expeditiously by, by his team. We, we did experience some of those rolling outages in the BPNL system, starting on, starting on Wednesday. And they lasted Wednesday afternoon into the evening, and I think by Thursday morning around 2:30, we had consistent power with the BPNL system. Blue Bonnet customers did start experiencing rolling outages on, on Sunday. I, I've talked about the police department already. The police department did a great job of keeping us all informed on the status of road conditions. I mentioned the extent to which they paid attention to folks who were in a vulnerable position as a result of, of the storm. I've heard a lot of stories, some of them are now on video, of how they assisted stranded motorists. Chief Stefanik, who's from the Northeast, takes personal credit for training the police department on how to drive in snow. I think it's probably well, well-deserved. And I think it was on Thursday, again, in the spirit of teamwork, Chief Nagy offered up Sergeant Daniel McManus to work with Rebecca and help out with the social media messaging. Sergeant McManus went into that without much social media experience, doesn't even have a Facebook account. I can kind of relate. And he was a tremendous amount of help, Rebecca reports. So we, we appreciate that. So moving on to the Public Works Department, I mentioned Curtis already. The, the Streets and Drainage Division did a great job of keeping up with de-icing. We had plenty of material on hand. I think the, the lack of accidents within the Bastrop city limits during what otherwise would have been horrendous driving conditions is a testament to that steady effort of placing that very effective de-icing material in the spots that needed it the, the worst. We did end up closing the River Wood Low Water Crossing as early as Sunday. We closed Fisherman's Park later that week, on Monday. And again, when it became crunch time, and we needed to go find water leaks throughout the system, it wasn't just the Water and Wastewater Division, it was also the Street Division helping with that. And they needed to take care of city facilities as well, and, and they did. I'm going to spend a few slides on what went on with the, with the water system. That was quite the yeoman's effort, again, on Curtis' part and his team. A lot of stories about the amount of hours those guys worked. Chris Rose was a, an absolute hero. Tracy Waldron and the, the team of folks, we called them the front line, that took, again, hundreds and hundreds of phone calls, mainly about water leaks. All of those were dispatched to, to Chris Rose of the, of the Water Division, who coordinated that effort to go out there and find those leaks and assist property owners with getting the water turned off. Again, a big part of our problem with the water system was the really high demand numbers way above normal. Most of that was probably from leaking water, broken water pipes. But another big component of that was, we asked people to run their faucets, to keep their pipes from, from freezing. And I think we lost a lot of water through, through that as, through that as well. We, we lost the Bob Bryant Water Plant on, on Monday, because, again, that's in the, that is in the Blue Bonnet service area, and those rolling outages created that casualty to the water system early on. And then on, on Tuesday, Mr. Hancock was still pretty confident that we were going to get this, get through this okay. He was looking at the numbers, and he was seeing that we still had plenty of capacity to, to cover even the increased demand. But he did start throwing out some warning signals on Tuesday that those, those levels were receding, and that we were having a difficult time keeping up. And then later that day, almost certainly because of the cold weather, we started losing our SCADA system. SCADA, again, is Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, and it's the automated system that we use, and so does every other utility, for, for getting real-time automated reports to our operators about the status of pressures and elevations in the water system. And I'll remember this quote forever. I asked Curtis how it was going on Tuesday, and he said, "Paul, I'm flying blind," which was not a good position for him to be in. So, again, more on the response from the Public Works Department, especially as it regards water. I've talked about this already, talked about the communication that was happening between the folks on the front line who are at home answering the calls. One of the things that Tracy Moffett, who is our supervisor in utility billing, did is she had access through her iPad to these automated reports from our automated meter system, which kudos to prior city council for making sure that that system is, is available. That gave us real-time information about where we had high consumption at the meter detail, and that was very helpful information to, to Mr. Rose and Mr. Hancock, so they could focus their efforts accordingly. And when those guys weren't out making sure those wat, the, the source of those water leaks were turned off, they had bottles of water in their truck. Thank you, Chief Rosales, making sure that we had that bottled water, and they would distribute that to folks. "Hey, we need to turn your water off. Sorry about that, but here's, here's a case of water as something to help you get by." And I think this is my, no, I probably have a couple more slides on water. A lot of stuff went on with the water system last week, as evidenced by Curtis' twenty-hour, consecutive twenty-hour workdays. We started losing water pressure to Zone Two on Wednesday, the seventeenth. We did get that back on, on Friday evening. A significant impact to the system that impacted Zone, and I'll, I should stop. I think a lot of people now understand better what our different pressure zones are in the water system. Zone Two is that eastern part of the city that is generally east of ninety-five and north of seventy-one, but south of seventy-one is generally east of MLK. We, we lost pressure there on, on Wednesday, got it back Friday evening. In Zone Three, which is the western part of the city, generally west of the river, we really did have sort of a perfect storm kind of events that impacted our water system last week. One of those was, we lost our disinfection system at the Bob Bryant wells, and that, that happened because a two-inch water line that feeds that chlorination system bust, busted. And so that was the driver of that first boil water notice that happened later, because we weren't able to disinfect the system. We started losing power in the BPNL system, which affected the, the pumps by the Willow Wells, that's in Zone One. That started happening on Wednesday. Our pumps did not like it when we had a generator hooked to them, and power was off, and then came back on. That disrupted the workings of those pumps. I know I'm not using technical language here. If you need that, there are people in the room who can help you with that. I just know the pumps didn't like it when the power came back on, and that affected things. And so we, we lost pressure, first off, in Zone One on Thursday morning, and then our flying-blind SCADA-related issues caused us to lose water in a storage tank at the Willow System on Thursday that we weren't aware of, and that caused us to lose water in Zone One a second time on Thursday. Thank you, Mr. Ennis, for that very timely text message, because that's the first we heard of it. So we appreciate that. And then finally, on, on boil water notices, just to kind of recap, again, Zone Three is that area west of town, that we issued that boil water notice about seven o'clock on Wednesday morning. We were able to lift that notice on that after, the afternoon We were able to lift that notice on that afternoon of the 20th, that's Saturday. Zone 1, that central part of the city, we issued the boil water notice at around 11:00 on Thursday. And again, that was lifted on Saturday. And then Zone 2 was, that's the most eastern part, and that zone, we issued the boil water notice on Thursday, and we were able to lift that on Monday. And that's the boil water notices and the required testing and the rules of when we can lift the notice or rescind the notice. That's all established by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, and there's a lot of precision there. And I think there are a lot of cities in the state of Texas that are more expert about that than they used to. Our new Water and Wastewater Superintendent, James Wilson, who's been on the job for a total of two months, was a tremendous help in making sure we did that the right way. And of course, Colin and Rebecca were a tremendous help in getting that word out in a fast way. So, I'll stop talking about water here pretty soon, but I did want to recap. I called this a perfect storm. There were several things that made Curtis' life miserable last week. One was the high demand that the system ultimately had a difficult time keeping up with. The extremely cold weather impacted our pumps and the SCADA system. The SCADA system, transducers being frozen, I do kind of sort of know what that is, and faulty signaling from the system to our operators caused them to be in that flying-blind state. The power interruptions and the extent to which our pumps didn't enjoy that, and losing that disinfection system in Zone 3 was impactful as well. Great job, Curtis. One of the videos I did was of Mr. Hancock just kind of going over the events of the week. Mr. Hancock, Mr. Job, understand this system very, very well. That's the benefit of having a couple of real experienced hands and well-trained hands in that regard. And I do agree with others who say this could have been a lot worse. So, we've talked about communications and messaging, and there are a lot of numbers here that show just how tuned in the public was to the messaging that, again, Colin and Rebecca were coordinating and sending out. And Counsel, again, I'll share the PowerPoints with you, so you can keep this as a reference. Pretty overwhelming, both in terms of volume, also overwhelming just in terms of positive responses, which Rebecca would share with us from time to time during the course of the week. People were suffering, people were worried, people didn't know when we would be back to normal. But so many people took the time to thank the city team for what they were doing and for the consistent messaging. And we talk a lot around here that not everybody follows Facebook or has a Facebook account, not everybody has a Twitter account. We use Facebook and Twitter because it's very, very effective, and that's where the reach is, and that is the most effective way to reach the biggest number of people. But recognizing that not everybody's plugged in there, there was the phone calls that Tracy and Tanya and Ann were answering, that was obviously effective. We did keep the website up to date. You can see here just how more than normal our website was being accessed by people who were seeking information. Everbridge is a brand name, that's this region's connection to the Warren Central Texas system that allows us to send targeted and specific messages via phone or text to folks that are in a particular geographic area. Colin can actually write a polygon on a map and have the message go straight to that geographic area. Or in this case, when we were talking about our three pressure zones, if there was a message that was just targeted at Zone 2, he could send a message to just Zone 2. We got a lot of positive feedback about that. And making that Everbridge system has been a priority of mine since I've been here. We kind of tested it live last week, and I think it worked just great. Direct messaging, again, credit to Rebecca for messaging people directly when an individual had a concern. I mentioned to Rebecca one day last week, I think maybe one of the things that characterized the city of Bastrop's response to the event was we were dealing with the big picture, we were dealing with the systems, we were dealing with those parts of city services that affect everybody, but we tried really hard not to lose touch with the needs of individuals. We had a lot of partners out there that were communicating with us as well. Visit Bastrop, the Chamber of Commerce, our assets. We have been building those relationships, those email distribution lists. It took advantage of that as well, and we asked people to help get the word out, and they did, and we appreciate that. I think that's, again, a good segue into a category of taking care of people. And Counsel, I think I've covered this, and there is the list of all the folks who were answering the phones. I think I left out Jennifer and Deborah and Kathy's names, but there they are. And if there's a statistic here tonight that I think is the most amazing, is that they took, that group of people, over that four-day period, took 3,400 calls. Just tremendous. Again, they were night and day taking those calls. I gave credit earlier to Chief Rosales and how much grouching he did to find water bottle donations. I don't have a final number on all of that, but once we secured them, we made sure we got that water out to people who needed it, and we did try to stay on top of what those needs were. So now, Tracy Waldron and I had a conversation on Monday, and the first thing she said was, "Well, you know, for me, this lasts for several months." And I said, "Yes, I know. Thank you, Tracy. We appreciate you, Counsel. It'll be a priority to make sure that we get every penny of reimbursement that is ultimately made available to us." There's not a lot of information out there about that. But even while we were in the throes of the response to the storm, we were reminding people to fill out the necessary paperwork that would allow us to collect and organize those costs. As you know, a big part of this was the governor declaring the emergency on Friday, the 12th. Thank you, Mayor Schrader, for following suit and establishing that local state of disaster. And again, we are collecting those costs. I think Mayor Schrader mentioned this in her mayor's report. We are learning about assistance that will be available to private property owners, and yeah, we'll be helping manage that as we go. So, just a few words about what's next. Immediately after the storm, and actually during the storm, we were getting some questions from people who were worried about how the storm would impact their electric bills. People were watching the media and hearing lots of scary stuff about the increased cost of power generation. We have had conversation with LCRA, our wholesale provider, and what they are telling us is that from their early calculations, they don't see a need to bump up the power supply portion of our rates. Counsel, our contract with them gives them that ability, and we appreciate that they're working hard to prevent that. We also get some calls from people who are worried about how this will impact their water bills. If they had a water leak, their consumption goes up. The city of Bastrop has a history of helping people whose consumption went up because of a water leak break. Typically, traditionally, we ask people to prove there was a break by showing us a plumber repair bill. We are not going to ask people to show us a plumber repair bill, but they will get bills, and those bills might be really high because of that high consumption, again, associated with a water line break. What we are going to be asking people to do, and again, we'll message this as well, is if they think their bill is high because of a water line break, to bring that to our attention, and what the city's practice has been in the past. And I think this is the way for us to go here on this event, moving on, is we'll take their consumption total and make sure it doesn't exceed the maximum for Tier 1. Counsel, as you know, our rate structure is structured by different tiers, and each of those tiers are for a category of consumption use, and the rate goes up. It's intended to incent conservation. The rate goes up as the tier goes up. And so, what the city's practice has been in the past is, well, we'll just take it down to Tier 1, which I think is a very fair way to approach that. And again, the message to people watching who are impacted by this is to give us a call at Utility Billing, and we'll take it from there. The city team hasn't debriefed yet. We will have a debriefing before too much time passes and talk about how the event went and the good and bad of that event and learn from it. I look forward to visiting with our partners in the region, especially McCounty, including them, and similar discussions. And of course, what we need to be thinking about as well is saying thank you to people. And to start, and I'm sure we're leaving people out here, we will create a more complete list, but all of these people will hear formally from the city of Bastrop about how much we appreciate them. Lowe's Home Improvement donated just truckload after truckload after truckload of bottled water. Not all of that went to the city of Bastrop, but a significant amount did, so we appreciate that. HEB provided food and assistance and worked with us to be accessible to city staff when we needed them to be, and so we appreciate that and for their donations. Bastrop Feed and Supply provided labor in the water distribution effort. There are neighbors here just across the street from the convention center. Speaking of neighbors, Neighbors Kitchen and Yard provided food throughout the community, and they also did a very cool thing by... They weren't brewing any beer during all of this, but they used their beer brewing facilities to boil water and distribute just hundreds of gallons of water to people who needed it. Trey and Rebecca and I had lunch at Neighbors on Monday, and we saw Mr. Dickey, and we were able to thank him personally for that. And he is just a wonderful community partner. Feed the Need, a local nonprofit who feels like before you can minister to people, you need to make sure their physical needs are taken care of. They ended up with a whole bunch of water and distributed that as well. Crystal Hancock, the spouse of Curtis Hancock, cooked several meals for Public Works employees, which doesn't sound like a bad deal at all. And Jill Rosales, the spouse of Andreas Rosales, did a whole lot of shopping and made sure that firefighters and others had all the supplies they needed to get through the several-day event. Again, a lot of city employees spent several days away from home. There were just a lot of other volunteers, including Bastrop area off-road and recovery that stationed around the community to help people who got into trouble. And again, we got so many encouraging words from people, and thank you from me to city employees who really do know how to handle an emergency. And we've got one last thing.
Well, the Utilities Department was being inundated with phone calls, and we had two ladies that were taking those calls. And they were answering the calls 24/7. So, I offered my phone number and came on the rotation list, and we got calls all night. So, if the phone rang at 2:00 in the morning, we answered the call, and they had somebody to talk to, not a machine telling you that your water was out. They already knew that. So, we were able to answer questions and let them know that we may not have all of the information right now, but we assure you that you can call back anytime. If you don't have access to media sites, you're going to get a live person. We're going to give you the most up-to-date information that we currently have. And that just really put the citizens at ease and kind of gave them some peace during a time that was so unprecedented, that we haven't seen in Texas. Not in my lifetime.
This was a very strange event.
Yes.
Yeah, so you helped out another department. I wonder if, in any of these conversations, did the person who was calling in learn that they were actually talking to the city's HR director that ever come up?
No, that never really came up. They didn't care who they were talking to. They just were so appreciative that they were talking to somebody.
Sure.
Yes.
So, you took some calls late at night.
Yes, sir.
How many calls did you take in that few-day time period?
Probably just myself, between 400 and 500 calls.
That's amazing. And mainly, that was, "Hey, my water's out, what can I expect?"
Yes, sir.
What was the nature of those calls?
The nature of the calls were, "Am I still on a boil ban? When is that going to come out? Is my trash service, are they going to be running this week?" From simple to, "Hey, I don't have any water. When do you think that might come on?" So, it just, the whole gamut. So, it was like we were answering questions that they would call in just for an everyday occurrence as well.
Do you think it made a difference that people were talking to you and not a machine?
Oh, yes, absolutely. And it was very positive. It was a rewarding experience, not only for myself, just from talking with our team members, that, you know, we really do live in a dynamic community, and it was just really a great experience for us, too. It was exhausting, not as exhausting as our guys working out in the field, but because we're home and warm and in our beds or at our desk in our houses, so it was completely different. But it was exhausting, and those phones did ring nonstop.
With the Public Works and the BPNL. Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Counsel.
Just a great job. There's going to be stories for a really long time. And one of the things that I can give people is the gift of time. So, Counsel, we are moving to Item 12C, which is the only reason that Curtis Hancock is still at work tonight, so that Curtis Hancock can make sure his truck can even find his house. We are going to Item 12C, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 202117 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract to Artisan Concrete Services Incorporated in the amount of $106,374.30, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Hancock?
Good evening. First, let me say thank you for jumping me to the front. I do appreciate that. In October, we brought y'all the earthwork that needed to be done to get the skate park up and going. On February 8th, we did receive four bids that we opened. The bids ranged from $64,000 to $204,000. After review of the packets, the low bid did not have a complete packet, nor could they meet the timeline, so therefore, they were disqualified. And then, that's where we came up with the next bid of $106,000. And so, we're here asking y'all tonight, after y'all told us to find the money, Tracy did find the money, and we got you the bids, and that's where we're sitting at tonight.
So, Mr. Hancock, if I remember correctly, because it was such a large number, we couldn't do it as a change order, so we had to bid it. The money has already been located and approved. You're just needing us to approve the bids that you and your consultant have reviewed and are recommending.
Correct.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Hancock?
I move to approve.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Jackson. You get caught by the time delay, Councilmember Jackson. So, are there any further conversations? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hancock, please go home and tell your wife we said hello.
Thank you for your job.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Hancock. All right, and speaking of... Speaking of some folks that need, may not want to spend the night with us, we're going to move to Item 12D, and that is an opportunity, Counsel, you'll be thrilled, we're going to get some money back. Item 12D on Page 4. Consider Action to Approve Ordinance Number 202103 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Bastrop, Texas General Obligation Refunding Bonds, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, prescribing the form of said bonds, approving any official statement, bond purchase agreement, paying agent, registrar agreement, and escrow agreements, establishing the procedures for selling and delivering the bonds, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Good evening.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. City Manager, Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance. This opportunity is something the Council and the city's done from time to time. Interest rates so low, there's opportunities to refinance existing debt to lower interest rates. This is unique. There are two different potential transactions that we have laid out. One is on a tax-exempt basis and one is on a taxable basis. And the only difference is the tax-exempt bonds that would be issued would be refinancing bonds that are callable. The taxable issue would be refinancing bonds that are not yet at the call date. They're typically two to four years out. What's also unique in this is the ordinance you're going to consider will allow you to do either those separately. There's also some talk at the federal level that they may approve the ability to do this on a tax-exempt basis for the bonds that aren't callable yet. You had that opportunity up until about 2017, then it was removed and they're considering giving it back to you. So this ordinance and this opportunity, we're kind of setting the stage to do it either way. Your delegation would delegate to the mayor and/or city manager the ability to finalize final terms. And we're going to monitor, it's a potential on this next COVID Relief Act that this gets put into it. Either way, we'll have up to six months to move on this and we'll just kind of monitor how things are going. But as it stands today, on a tax-exempt basis, we are looking at the potential to take bonds that are, or COs that are at 3% to 4% interest rate, down to just over 1.1%. And that would create a savings of just over $376,000 in gross dollars. That's just under a 10% present value level. Usually we target 3% or better. The taxable series would be taking bonds that are 3% to 4.25% down to 1.785%. So as you can see, there's about a 60 to 70 basis point benefit to be able to do a tax-exempt. The catch is if they don't do anything and give you that opportunity and over the course of the next year, rates go up, we can easily lose 70, 80 basis points in a matter of months. So we're going to, again, monitor this, see if it makes sense to move forward, but this savings for the just over $11.8 million would be just over $1.18 million in savings. I think largely that goes towards the utility. So with that, we can help as you go forward with other utility projects. And so we're just going to monitor this. This delegation gives you authority to grant us to move forward, set everything up, and again, have six months to kind of pull the trigger. We will be back to you with updates on what is finalized or what decisions are being considered. Bart Fowler, your bond attorney, is here if you have any questions over the ordinance to walk through that, but that's the two transactions we're asking you to consider.
Excellent. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Wegmiller?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. We always like refinancing and saving the taxpayer dollars. It's kind of a win-win.
Please keep doing so.
Yes, that's excellent. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Great. And also thank you for moving us up.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, and we appreciate that. Motion carries unanimously. I now want to move to item 9B for the other folks who have worked all day, and that is receive update on construction of Highway 71 from Diana Schultz, area engineer, Texas Department of Transportation.
Thank you for having us today. Yeah, last week was a pretty long week.
Pretty long week.
So I did bring two other individuals with me today. I have Mark Baumann, he's my assistant, and then Jesse Fleming, he is our consultant engineer that is overseeing the 71 project. Before I turn the presentation over to Jesse, just wanted to let you know, we have three upcoming projects besides 71 coming to the area. We have State Highway 304 from 71 to Lower Red Rock Road, and that's basically a pavement and resurfacing. It's about a two-month-long project. It let in January this year, and Texas Materials is going to be the contractor. We don't have a start date for that one yet. We do have State Highway 71. It's also going to be a pavement repair and resurfacing, and that's from FM 20 to Children's Drive. And that's going to go out for bids in November of 2021. And then the last one is Loop 150 here through town from 71 to 95, and that's going to let in December of '21, and that's a pavement repair and resurfacing also. So I will turn it over to Jesse and he will share the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who is the operator? Okay, the round button? Okay. All right, thank you. Again, my name's Jesse Fleming. I work with PaveTex and it's our honor to be here, to work for Tex dot and to work in the city of Bastrop. It's been a pleasure for us and will continue to be so for a couple of years. So we have a short presentation for you. I apologize, it's a lot of dates and it's a lot of data, but I'm an engineer and that's what we do. So, all right, just kind of an overview of the project. So everybody's familiar with the location of the project. It goes from Perkins to east to MLK. It involves the replacement of, or the construction of nine bridges total. There's four bridges around the Colorado River area. The main lane bridge at Colorado River will be widened. It'll provide a center concrete barrier, four-foot inside shoulders and 10-foot outside shoulders. So there's no more new lanes on the bridge, but it'll be much safer from the new configuration. We'll also be building two new frontage road bridges across the Colorado River, which you see that now under construction. And there's also a westbound exit ramp bridge right about Pecan Street. Five bridges around the UP Railroad. There's a new frontage road bridge that's going east. There'll also be an entrance ramp right there. And then the two existing main lane bridges will be replaced. And then the last is the Gil's Branch Bridge that's at grade right there by the railroad. So the next few slides will just give you an idea of the schedule and kind of where we're at. Right now, we're still in phase one, stage one and two are combined. We anticipate being done with this part around April, and that's a total of about 21 months that we will have spent in this. During this phase and these stages, the traffic has remained, on the main lanes, has remained unchanged, except that we did create a temporary exit ramp for the westbound traffic. That's over there near Sonic. That's currently in use. And at the Colorado River, we have constructed the westbound French Road. There's about 80% done, and the eastbound French Road Bridge, which is about 95% done. At UPRR, you've seen all the substructures have been built, and we're getting close to setting the beams on those. We're around 25% done with those bridges. During this phase, we'll also reconstruct the U-turns on each side of Gil's Branch. We've already completed the one on the west side and the one on the east side is to be done. And then we will also reconstruct the east and westbound frontage roads, and that's currently underway. And the frontage roads have mostly been converted to one-way traffic at this point. We're trying to hold out from the railroad back to MLK as long as we can to benefit the school. Okay, so once we have the westbound French Road and the westbound ramp bridges complete, we can move into stage three. And during this stage, we'll complete the remainder of the work on the frontage roads, but we'll always have at least one lane of traffic open on the frontage road for through traffic. This stage shifts the westbound exiting traffic to the new exit ramp bridge that we're building. Then that will allow us to demolish that temporary westbound exit down there by Sonic that we're using now, and we'll construct a new entrance ramp in that area at the end of this stage. The only impact to traffic, to main lane traffic during that time will be, we'll have an overnight lane closure to help tie that ramp in. And this stage is scheduled to last six months and should be done around the fall of this So then that takes us to the last stage of phase one, and this primarily allows us to build and open the new eastbound exit ramp that's on the west end of the project. It's about two months in duration total. First, we'll open the eastbound entrance ramp that's just east of the railroad, and then we'll be able to close the existing eastbound entrance ramp down on the west end, close to the RV park. And then we will build that new eastbound exit ramp. And then in this stage, the main lane and the westbound French Road traffic is the same as in the previous stage, but the eastbound French Road begins to enter just east of the Then we move into phase two. So phase two actually includes some significant changes as we begin to shift traffic onto the frontage roads so that we can rebuild the main lanes. Stage one shifts all the eastbound main lane traffic to the frontage road, and all the westbound main lane traffic will use that new exit ramp just east of the river near Water Street. During this stage, the main lane Colorado River Bridge and the eastbound main lane bridge at the railroad will be rebuilt. This stage lasts approximately eight months and should end by the summer of '22. Then in stage two of phase two, the eastbound main lane traffic will remain on the eastbound frontage road as in the previous stage, but we'll shift the westbound main lane traffic to the eastbound main lane on a temporary crossover at the east end of the project. It'll take them over the railroad tracks and then we'll transition them back over to the westbound main lane before the river. This traffic shift allows us to rebuild the westbound main lane bridge at the railroad. This stage is approximately five months and ends in the fall of '22. Phase two, stage three focuses on the Gil's Branch Bridge reconstruction. The bridge will be built a half at a time so that we can maintain traffic flow. The southern portion of the bridge will be built first. The traffic will then be moved onto that newly constructed part and the northern half will be built. The railroad signal reconstruction will occur during or prior to this stage. We've already done the planking work there. This work will be done over a weekend and may cause the closing of that detour, but the way that this is working out, hopefully we'll be able to work that into the summer and will not impact the school. This work covers eight months and occurs concurrently with the stages one and two of phase two, and it is due to complete in the fall of '22. And then the final phase, we'll see all the traffic lanes open and functioning in their design configuration. At this point, the project may look a little bit like a patchwork quilt because we'll have lane lines that don't follow the pavement joints. We may have some temporary marking shadows, things like that. But in this stage, we'll actually place the final pavement surface and the final markings that'll clean everything up real nice and it'll have a uniform appearance throughout the project. This stage is shown to be about six months long and should end around the winter of '22. Right now, we're showing January of '23. And then here's just a overall view of the project timeline. The schedule represents the contractor's work plan. We're currently about 60 days behind the original schedule. However, the schedule is very fluid. There's many factors that influence it and the contractor is always trying to accelerate and catch up. Our goal is to complete this project in a timely manner while maintaining safety and minimizing the adverse impacts to the city and to the people. So that's pretty much everything.
Great job. Loving, it goes without saying, and I'm going to ask before, please make sure that we get a copy of the slides if that's possible, because, okay, great, great.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
I'll just be, hopefully send some slides of that so I can get a better look at it because I'm concerned about the traffic coming off of College Street, over to Love's Lane, over to the bus y'all. And I've got some concerns there. I'd like to take a closer look at it. Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for taking time. Really appreciate it. It's, the works, I'm surprised you're not farther behind than 60 days, given the things that you've had to deal with and COVID and everything else. And Diana, just so glad, so glad that you're our district engineer and really appreciate the support that you give to city staff and to the city of Bastrop. So thank you guys so much for your time tonight. All right, Council, I'm looking out in the audience and this is really weird, but I'm going to do it anyway. We are going to consent agenda item 11B, and I'm just going to read it so that this man can go home. Consider and adopt, item 11B, consider and adopt on second reading ordinance number 202101 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, abandoning and vacating, I'm reading the right one, aren't I? 8.0, 0.351 acres of church street. That's not the right one. Okay, I'm not seeing one on here. So it's, yeah.
I can't see text box.
Okay, excellent.
But I find it only go 283B, but that's all.
Okay, all right. Never mind, we'll take care of the consent agenda. Now we're going, yes, we're going to let, yeah, that's where it's going to go. So Mr. Morales is here, we're going to hear Half. It's 8:00. Do we need to take a quick bio break or can we hear Mr. Half? All right, we're ready to rock and roll. All right, Council, we are going to item nine, that's wrong, 7E. Receive a presentation from Half &amp; Associates regarding Gil's Branch Flood Mitigation Project. Hello, Mr. Morales?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. You know, it's, we're going from ice to talking about flood extremes. So we're going from solid water to flowing water. So it's kind of been a nice progression. So I'm waiting for my slides to pop up. But my name is Paul Morales. I'm a project manager for Half Associates and I'm here to give you an update to the Gil's Branch Flood Mitigation Project that we've been, worked for quite a while now. We're at the tail end of this project, so I'm excited to give you an update. I think it's the big button. Okay, excuse me. Got some, something in my throat. Anyways, the project overview is for this flood mitigation project to reduce flooding overflow for Gil's Branch. Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it. To reduce overflow from Gil's Branch, back in 2015, there was a Memorial Day flood event that occurred in the city. And the image that you see on the left there, that, the dark blue is what, based off of information we got from city staff, basically showed the flooding extents within the city during that flood event. So after several analysis, the city decided to move forward with a design to try to convey as much and reduce flooding as much as possible throughout the city. And we started looking at channel improvements as well as bridge improvements through the system from basically the railroad up to Highway 95. And so the improvements that we started looking at were doing some channel benching. And I'll talk a little bit about more of that in detail as we start going through the sections of the improvements. But we also looked at improvements to bridges as well, basically taking the existing culvert systems that are out there, adding a little bit more conveyance under the bridge structures, the road the road structures, and creating a bridge to convey water underneath the roadways, which would definitely help with the, the traffic safety and the ingress and egress of vehicles through the city during an extreme flood event. So we're in the process of designing the plans and specifications. We're about, probably about a month out from finalizing a set to give to the city. And then finally, having this set designed and ready to go shovel-ready so that the city can apply for federal grants or even state grants. We did, the city did apply for a Water Development Board grant, which was a flood infrastructure grant, but it was more of a loan. So the city would still have to pay that amount of money in addition to the loan percentage, which is a very low, small percentage, but they would still have, you all would still have to pay that, that amount. The GLO released a CDBG mitigation grant, which is a very good grant if, if we, if the city can get the application approved by the GLO. It pays for a good portion of the construction as well as a good portion of the, the land acquisition that this project is proposing to acquire to build these improvements. And I'll, I'll give a, an update at least on what I know from Langford &amp; Associates, because they're the ones that actually submitted that, that application on behalf of the, the So some of the project benefits, and, and now that I'm looking at these, these slides, it's, it's really hard, and I probably should have, have made the exhibits a little bit larger. But the, the blue area is the extents of the 2015 flood event that we see for, for the 100-year storm event, including, we're taking consideration of Atlas 14 rainfall, which is the latest new rainfall that's been released by the, by NOAA. And we've also incorporated future land use conditions within the, the Gilz Branch watershed. So we took, we're taking into account full development based off the land use for the city. So we're, we're, we're taking as much information to try to understand how the, the watershed's going to react when we have a full 100-year rainfall event with Atlas 14 rainfall data plus full development within the watershed, once it, once the watershed actually gets to that point. The light blue shows the improvements and the reduction of the, of the flood plane, the proposed flood plane, once these improvements are incorporated and constructed. There, the table, I don't know if we can zoom in. Is there a possibility we can zoom into that upper table at the, on that edge? There you go, thank you very much. I can't even read it on my printout, but for existing conditions, we have a total of about 213 structures that we've located within the existing flood plain, which are shown in green and red. We tried to identify all the, the building footprints within the flood plain or the flooding area. Once the proposed construction is completed, we, we, the excavation is completed for the channel improvements, the bridges are installed as well. We reduce the number of structures within that footprint, which is in the light blue area that you can kind of see on the lower left-hand corner. We reduce the number of buildings within the flood plain or, or surrounded by flooding down to 25. So if you, you take the difference between existing conditions of 213 structures, proposed structures down to 25, we're, we're removing 188 structures out of the flooded, flooding area for the 100-year storm event, which is, which is pretty amazing. Talking to Langford, as we started to put the, the application for the GLO CDBG application together, she was really impressed, and she's got some pretty high expectations of, of GLO accepting this application because of the, the extensive benefits that this project provides to the city. Can you zoom back out for me? Okay, so as I mentioned, the increased, the, the project benefits reduce, has a reduction of approximately 110 acres of flooding. The dark blue to the light blue is about 110 acres that we're removing out of the flood plain. Total of about 188 structures removed from the flood plain as well. We're increasing traffic safety on Pine Street, Chestnut Street, as well as Farm Street. And then in addition, which is something that we didn't have as part of our scope, but once this project is completed and we do the, the excavation of the channel benching is, is completed, there's a really good opportunity for the city to have interconnectivity between the north and south side of the city through trails, through this, through this channel benching that we're, we're providing here. As well as in some of the larger areas that we're, we're extending a lot of the, the wider footprints for the channel benching, there's also an opportunity for the city to have like an amphitheater that's overlooking Gilz Branch or some side of, some sort of recreation that could benefit the, the citizens of Bastrop as well. So to give you a summary of, of what the, the changes or the, the proposed improvements are coming about for this flood mitigation project, I'm going to start at, at the, the railroad down at the south end of the project and then move upstream towards Highway 95. And I've kind of broken it into, you can, you can kind of see on the left-hand side, that image shows the entire length of the project. The orange is the extents of the channel benching cut that we're proposing. And then we've added dimensions in there. On the previous update that we had, we didn't have dimensions because we're still trying to figure out full extents of the channel cut and, and what, what improvements we were going to propose, but we're so close to getting the, the plans completed, we've got refined numbers that we can share tonight. And then as I go through the next slides, it'll go from the lower section to the middle and then the upper. So starting at the railroad, this wide 255-foot channel cutting on, on the, the right side of the bank, 100-foot of channel cutting on the left, on the left side of the channel bank. This becomes what we're calling the detention pond on Gilz Branch. There's, with all the channel improvements that we're doing upstream and conveying all the water within the channel, instead of the water overflowing to the overbanks and going through the city streets and through a lot of the city buildings and, and private property buildings as well, this water is now conveyed within the channel to the extent that we can capture as much as we can. And down at the bottom, the, the railroad becomes a bottleneck, and so it starts to create a, a constant, we call it a tailwater effect or a backwater effect, that it's controlled by that opening of the railroad. So because of that, we've, we've, we're proposing to, to capture as much volume of water that we can contain within just downstream of MLK. And so that's, that's really becoming what, an inline, almost like an inline detention that's, that's holding a lot of this storm water, instead of it overflowing to the, to the, to the west of the, of the channel. And as we start moving upstream, on the west side of MLK, there's two homes that we were directed to, to stay away from and, because there's historical significance to both of those homes. So what we ended up doing is doing some channel improvements. You can see we've got a call-out for retaining wall that's, that's shown in kind of a light blue, or maybe it's a light green color. We're still trying to come up with a solution. Right now, we've got the worst-case solution of installing soldier pier walls, which are basically very expensive, yes ma'am, very expensive retaining wall solution that we didn't really want to move, but, but the current cost estimate assumes the worst-case scenario. We did have some feedback from our structural engineers and our geotech, and they went back out, took some more borings, and we're now looking at a possibility of using a sheet pile wall with a veneer on it. And so we can put a, it's a lot, it's, it's much less expensive than a soldier pier wall. They just have to vibrate those steel sheet pile walls into the ground, and then we would place a veneer on top of that, which would have some sort, it could have some sort of form, pattern on it, like a rock wall or something, so it doesn't look like a concrete retaining wall. So we're looking at trying to save some money there on that cost for that retaining wall. That, that retaining wall is in a very tight, constrained location that we, that we don't really have a whole lot of excavation behind the wall because we're so close to those two homes. So the best solution we've, we've come up with right now is to do a sheet pile wall that would be vibrated in, and then we'd have a veneer on top of that. MLK culvert structures are going to stay as is, since we didn't have the ability to open up that into a bridge system. And quite honestly, the backwater that we're seeing from the railroad through this kind of meander section just west of MLK, there's so much backwater that a bridge system doesn't really help the, reduce the water surface elevation, just because there's, it's backing up water. So then moving continually, continuously moving, moving upstream from MLK, we're, we're benching on both sides. We've got about an 85-foot bench cut on the south side of the bank, 110 on the north side of the bank. And if you can see within that, I think I can actually point, this section right here gives you an idea from, we took a screenshot from our plant set. What we're trying to do with this channel benching, we're keeping the, the, what we're calling the channel forming flow to, to stay intact and what, I, I know that's, that's a lot of engineering terminology, but, but basically, the, if you can define and keep that section of the channel alone, the channel will dynamically move within that bench section, and there's less erosion that the city would have to deal with. And then in addition to that, if we stay above the, the waters of the US, which is the ordinary high watermark that's defined in the field by our environmental folks, we, we minimize the, the amount of mitigation this project has to pay for. And so as long as we're outside of waters of the US, the permitting is, is pretty minimal. Yeah. So, so this dark line that you see off to the left and to the right of the channel, that is the proposed channel cut that we're, we're calling a channel benching. So it's about a 1% slope from that elevation of the ordinary high watermark, and it goes up 1% just to allow whatever water is in there to drain back to the, the main channel. And then we have a, a stable three-to-one slope back up to the existing grade, which is shown in the dashed line. So the existing contour or the grades that we see for this channel are shown in the, in the dashed line. And the solid line that we're doing for the, the channel benching is going to be a vegetated channel, so we're going to, we're proposing native grasses so that we've got a, a long root system to help stabilize those slopes and, and prevent any, any excessive erosion through that, through those channels.
Mr. Morales, that's a great graph. We don't have it on our slides. So Trey, I don't know if maybe he added it later or it didn't get to PowerPoint, but if, either way, if we could just update what council has, it would be helpful if we could see it. Thank you.
Okay. You have it? Okay. So, so that's the lower section. We, we continue to benching on both sides of the channel, and, and when we say benching, it's always hard for people to understand what we're doing, so we always have to have a graphic to try to understand, to, to try to convey that, that message across. One of the things that I, I want to do, once we finalize the, the plant set, is to have some renderings from our landscape architects so that we can show visually in a 3D perspective what this channel could look like once it's completed. So continues, continuing to move up, at Pine Street, we're proposing a bridge improvement, which is a dual-span bridge of a total of about 80 feet. And then north of Pine Street, we're also continuing to do channel benching on both sides as well. 50-foot cut on the, on the east side of the channel and a 50-foot cut on the west side near Pine Street, and a smaller 25-foot cut closer to, to Chestnut because of that business that's right there. We're trying to stay away from it as much as we could.
So given that Diana just told us that Loop 150 project from '71 to '95 is on their projects, any chance we can get a little help from Text Dot on the bridge?
Yeah, so we're, we're working with Diane and her folks at Bastrop State Park for the rebuilding of the dam. We're actually using some of their right-of-way for, for staging and stockpiling of materials so we can, we can coordinate with her if you'd like.
What I, from a, from a taxpayer's standpoint, they don't want to see the highway department come through and fix the pavement, and then the city come back six months later and tear it up to build a bridge. It makes people say, does your right hand not know what your left hand's doing? So I, if we could...
We'll, we'll definitely coordinate with Text Dot.
Thank you.
Yes, yes ma'am. Okay, so moving up to, to Chestnut, that's also another bridge improvement. This one's a 75-foot span, and then we continue to see a 70-foot cut on the left bank, or on the right bank, I'm sorry, and then a 55-foot cut on the left bank. The visitor center was giving us a little bit of a headache there, trying to get around it, but we've, we came up with a solution where we, we're going to have to, just due to the velocities in the channel and the amount of water that's now coming down, or will be coming down, Gilz Branch, we're going to have to place concrete slope stabilization to handle those velocities there, because it's, it tends to be a, quite of a bit of a steep slope. Everywhere else, we're able to get at least three and a half to one, so it's a pretty stable slope. And, and certain key areas, we're having, we, we've got to stabilize it with, with Further upstream, we've got another cross-section, which kind of gives you an idea of what we're doing within the parking lot area of the convention center. In this section, we're only proposing to, to do a channel cut on one side of the bench, just don't have room on the other side of the channel. And then where, there's also a little berm, which I failed to mention on the previous slides. Let me go back. There's these yellow lines here that we're identifying as a berm, and it, it, it shows up on this cross-section right here. And the reason we need to have a, a, we're calling it a landscape berm, but it's basically a, a small little two-to-three-foot-high embankment, because as the water spills over onto the bank, it, it drops in elevation as it heads westward. And so in order for us to contain the flow and prevent that overflow, we've got to have this little small landscape berm that we're in certain sections from Pine Street up to Farm Street. So we have our landscapers working on a, a rock pattern very similar to the convention center that's out there, so it all kind of matches together, and it's not something that, that sticks out like a sore thumb. The other thing is that I want to mention here on the, on the conceptual design, we were looking at, I'm waiting for my little pointer to come up here. There it is. We initially were taking pretty much all of this parking lot. So through refinement, a little bit more detailed analysis, we were able to reduce this channel benching to just one side of the parking lot and a little corner here. As part of our plans, we've come up with a solution to reorganize the, the traffic flow through that parking lot, and we've had to adjust some of the storm drain system through this parking lot because it's getting treated by this water quality pond and detention pond that's sitting behind the, the structure here, the convention center here. So in light of all the refinement, we were able to reduce quite a bit and not impact as much as the parking lot as we initially had thought during conceptual design. And then moving up to the last section, which is the upper section north of Farm Street. Farm Street is also going to be a bridge improvement. That one's also going to be an 80-foot span with a center support structure as well. And then moving upstream, we, we, we drop the, the need for that landscape berm, and everything's channel-contained from Farm Street all the way up to Highway 95. So on the lower half, we're looking at about a 95-foot channel benching, kind of middle, middle way through this section, about a 90-foot, and then further upstream, it drops to about a 60-foot channel benching. And this cross-section here also gives you another idea that we're only proposing to cut on the, the western side of the creek. And then once we get to Highway 95, it's an existing structure, we're not making any changes, proposing any changes to that structure. So we've talked a lot about the channel benching. I just want to go over very quickly about the bridge improvements. One of the things that we're, we're looking at on the bridge improvements, and there's kind of two different images here. This is planned view of the bridge. This is the planned view of the, the plans from, from, for Chestnut, but then we also have a cross-section of the bridge on the lower half. So there's a lot of lines in there, and they're engineering plans, and they can get very confusing, so I'm going to try to explain what we have here. But as far as the bridge improvements, we're doing bridge improvements, as I mentioned, for Farm Street, Chestnut, and Pine, and they range in spans from 80 to 75 feet in, in, in length. They will be dual-span, so that means we've got two, two spans on, on either side of the bridge, supported by a center pier, if I can get my little arrow guy to come up. But there's a center, center pier in there that's supporting the two spans. As I mentioned before, it's increasing the flow conveyance and area underneath the bridge. increasing the flow conveyance and area underneath the bridge to help convey a lot of this water underneath the bridge. And then what we're also doing for each of the bridges, for Farm, Chestnut, and Pine, is we're adding sidewalks on both sides of the roadway for any future sidewalk connections that the city may want to connect to. As far as Farm Street and Chestnut, Chestnut only has a sidewalk on one side. The other side's really hard for any pedestrians to get through. Farm Street doesn't have any sidewalks on either side. Pine Street, if I'm not, I mean Farm Street, if I'm not mistaken, has a sidewalk, but then it ends right at the bridge. So we're proposing to extend that pedestrian access on both sides of the bridge for all three of the bridges. So we're trying to improve the pedestrian traffic as we're trying to control floodwaters as well. Okay. And I think this is my last slide. Excuse me. So the project timeline for Gill's Branch, we started back in 2019 for the engineering design phase, which half was contracted to do. We've had some delays as part of our schedule. We've had issues getting the survey data that we needed. So we constantly had to get, send out our crews to get information for certain areas where we needed more elevations, trying to get full lines for a lot of the manholes. We had to pop covers and work with Curtis and the city to try to get information on wastewater lines. And then Geotech didn't have the boreings deep enough so that we could, our structural guys were confident that the design was adequate and would hold up. So they had to go out a couple times. And so we've had a few delays and some delays as far as trying to move forward. We were intended to submit the final plans in December of 2021, or 2020. Due to the delays, we're proposing to submit in March of, which basically is next month of 2021. We are pretty close to wrapping that up. So we don't think we're going to be able, we're going to miss that deadline. But we should have 100% plans submitted to the city with a cost estimate and a design basis report that kind of wraps everything all together with specifications. Late last year, we worked closely with Langford to put together the GLO CDBG MIT grant application. I reached out to her a couple weeks ago. She had mentioned that she's anticipating to hear from GLO by March. And there's probably a few months in there that you've got to coordinate and negotiate with the GLO in order to get under contract. So we're anticipating that may be completed by May of 2021. And as soon as that is under contract with GLO and the city, that's a great time to start looking at land acquisition. We've got about 21 properties that will need drainage cements acquired for this project. I want to say that there is a total, yes, here we go, 21 properties that will acquire drainage cement, not including the city-owned properties. And we estimate about eight to 12 months for that to happen. While land acquisition is moving forward, we recommend to move forward with utility relocation. As part of our scope, we only were to identify the utility relocation conflicts. So the utility relocation still needs to be done. And during the land acquisition period is a good time to start working on that, coordinating with the private utilities in order to get them to move the utilities for the future project.
This may be more for staff than for you. Do we anticipate any problems with the land acquisition project that we can possibly mitigate prior to starting the process or concurrent with the process?
So we submitted, yes, as to answer your question, we've already talked to land acquisition folks. Everything's in, kind of in the ready to jump. We just don't have any money. So we're waiting to see if we're awarded and all that's in there, and then we'll just start immediately.
But as far as the negotiation phase with the property owners, we don't anticipate any issues?
We still need to get appraisals.
Say again?
We still need to get appraisals.
Okay.
So, and it's for federal, so it's a little bit different. But yes. But I do anticipate it will take some time. Hopefully not too long.
Just trying to get a jump on it.
But that is a large cross-section. So I'll have to make sure we explain that.
Yeah.
That's right. As soon as we're funded, we're ready to go. And he talked a little earlier about the Texas Water Development Board. That's just a backup idea, just in case we don't get the grant. We didn't want to miss that opportunity.
Okay. So if all goes well, land acquisition, relocation happens in about eight to 12 months. We're anticipating a construction start of April 2022. This construction for the channel improvements is almost about 5,000 linear feet from the railroad up to Highway 95. So it's a pretty long channel excavation. You're going to have a lot of dirt that you can sell, which you guys might want to start thinking about where some of this fill's going to go. So once all that's done, we're anticipating about 12 months of construction timeline for the whole project to be constructed. And I think with that, that is the end of my presentation.
Counsel, Mr. Jobe has sent me a text. There were, the slide on the bridge you didn't have, some of the cross-sections you didn't have. But he has put an updated PowerPoint in our Dropbox folder. And I'm sure he'll make that where the public has access to that as well, even if it just has to be listed as a different file. So did want you to know that you would be getting that information. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, ma'am. Just several things that I didn't see that need some attention. I think we go back to Farm Street, I think there's a, I'm not sure whether it's a, it's got to be a sewer line that runs parallel with Farm Street at the bridge. And that needs to be addressed. I don't know if it's something you can relocate or not, but it's going to be directly in that channel.
Yes, sir. We have the one within the creek or the one...
It's in the creek, yeah.
So we've identified that pipeline for utility relocation. We have not come up with a solution for that. That's kind of the next step. But there's quite a bit of, I mean, if I show you, let me just go to the bridge. Going the wrong way. All the colored lines that you see in this upper image here, the green lines are all the wastewater lines. The yellow and orange, that's gas and telecom. The red lines are overhead utilities. What else do we got? I know there's a blue line in here for water. So each of the road crossings has a significant amount of utilities that need to be considered and relocated for these bridges to be widened. But we have identified that wastewater line just north of Farm Street. Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Can we go over to MLK and Emil Street? Got a question about that.
Right here?
Um...
MLK and Emil?
Yeah, MLK and Emil.
Right. It's underneath your cross-section.
It's right there, if you can see it.
But anyway, there's a channel, well, there's a lot of drainage that comes down, natural drainage that comes down Emil Street. And there's a channel that goes, after it comes under MLK, it goes directly down to Gill's Branch. How are you going to address that? Just clean it up and put grass in it or?
I'll mention it, and then you can follow up. We've worked with, we're working with Curtis and the city. The plan is to extend that drainage swell with an inlet and capture that flow and put it in a pipe and then outfall to the creek. So right now in our plans, what we have is that we're to coordinate with the city for them to give more information as far as what that outfall's going to look like and the elevation. So that's the way we have it addressed in the plans right now.
Okay. Very good. And for the $64,000 question, after the reduction, the reduction of structures in this plan, you think that might be any way that the core engineers will relocate their floodplain? Because there's a lot of people in that area that are paying flood insurance. I'm hoping that we can get these guys out of the floodplain.
Get a loma so they can get out of the floodplain.
Yes. Right. And I'm glad you brought that up because I had that in the back of my mind, and I wasn't sure if I needed to bring it up. But once this project is constructed, then a lomer will be sent to FEMA to redefine and remap the floodplain. So instead of it being as wide as it is, it'll be more channel-contained. The only section that we cannot get out of or reduce the floodplain enough, whoops, I'm going the wrong way, is this lower section right here. We did the best we could to try to remove the floodplain and reduce it as much as we can. But this section, which right here is the railroad, there's this small, little channel that was outside of our project reach. And this may be something that we want to evaluate while land acquisition is moving forward and maybe consider adding some channel improvements through this section to help reduce the flooding that's leaving the banks in this section here. But to answer your question, once the project is completed, a lomer could be submitted to FEMA, and FEMA will review it, will send them our models, and the floodplain could be remapped.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Excellent questions. And Trey and Paul both, it goes without saying that the potential of that lomer needs to be considered in the appraisal and what we're willing to pay for the land acquisition if there's an advantage to the property as a result of the project. We need to have a holistic view and make sure that the appraiser's up to speed on all of those aspects.
Yeah, that's right. And the area he was pointing out with the, I'll call that a little pink bubble there. We absolutely have already talked to those property owners a little bit, making sure. And they are interested in getting rid of the property. We just need to make sure it's a fair deal.
Yep.
And then we happen to own two of the three lots on Emil. So we're saving those. It's in our back pocket. We'll probably do some excavation and stuff there as well. We may need to talk to those properties owners on the east side of the railroad tracks as well.
It's an exciting project. It's been needed for how long, Mr. Peterson? Decades, right?
He told me a story one time. He said when he was a kid, he would step over the ditch. And now it's 40-foot wide.
He said longer than he is in age, but it's been a long, it's never not been needed. And to have it taken care of correctly is just really exciting. So...
It's huge.
Just a great update, Mr. Morales, especially when we're going to get access to the same slides that you're showing us. That'll be helpful. Now you've talked about them. It'll make more sense when we're able to see them.
And once, if you have any questions, please, you know, push them through Trey, and he can send them to me. Once I get that rendering put together, I'll send it to Trey, and he can send it off to you all to take a look at what we're visually thinking this channel improvements could look like.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks for staying late this evening. Counsel, any other comments for Mr. Morales?
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Counsel, we have very few items left, and I think it'll go pretty fast. Everybody good if we just knock it out? All right. We are on 9A. We need to hear from Ms. Waldron. Received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending January 31st, 2021. Ms. Waldron, good evening.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. The full report is in your packet. We just have a few slides to just highlight some of the hot topics, but there's really not a whole lot that we haven't discussed already. There are a few funds, cemetery fund and the park dedication fund that are running behind forecasts. Cemetery, we just haven't had a lot of lot sales the first four months of this fiscal year. The hot fund is obviously the one we are talking about and monitoring and meeting about. And so the actual is 37% below forecast at this point. We have met with Visit Bastrop. We have had conversations about methods of projecting and looking at how we're even going to project the rest of this year, but also what we're going to look at in fiscal 2022 when we start that budget process. And we will be bringing back to counsel those projections once we get them down on paper.
Do you have an estimate time when you'll be, when counsel can expect it, to see it back?
I think we'll come to counsel with sufficient time to deal with it during the current fiscal year and also think about how it would impact next fiscal year. This is a bit of a moving target. Counsel, I do think we have some time. We have had good conversations with our partners here. Give us April so that you can think about it more deeply in May during that pre-budget planning session.
And thank you, Mr. Hoffman, because that's what I was thinking about. For the strategy meeting on May 14th, that'd be a good time. That'll be a part of the discussion. And I also just wanted to set expectations because we had talked about it and asked you to bring back a strategy. So I didn't want counsel thinking, well, when is it? When is it? So May-ish timeframe. And to your point, we need enough of the year behind us that we know what we're dealing with.
Right.
So that's super helpful. Thank you.
I will say the hotels were full during the ice storm. I told Susan Smith that was a heck of a way to promote.
To fill the hotel. Yeah, absolutely.
And on the expense side, everything is positive. So there's really not a whole lot to report on that. Any questions about any part of the report?
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron? Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Really appreciate those department reports. Madam Secretary, do we want signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull off 11C just to ask a question or two for those watching.
Excellent. Madam Secretary, if you'll read items 11A and 11B.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the January 28th, 2021 Joint Council and Planning and Zoning Commission and February 9th, 2021 regular meeting. Item 11B, consider and adopt on second reading ordinance number 2021-01 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, abandoning and vacating a 0.351-acre portion of Church Street roadway, being all of that certain 0.351-acre, 15,297 square feet tract of land situated in the Bastrop Town tract survey. Abstract number 11, Bastrop County, Texas, being more particularly described as being a portion of Church Street, 55.55 right-of-way of the City of Bastrop, said 0.351-acre, 15,297 square feet tract of land being more particularly described by meets and bounds and plat attached heretofore as Exhibit A, which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein for all purposes, authorizing the city manager to execute a deed to convey said right-of-way to adjacent owners and providing for findings of fact, repealer, and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice, and meeting. This concludes the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to item 11C, consider action to approve resolution number R 202119 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving task order number four to Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated for services that include preparation of hazardous mitigation grant, cost estimates, and exhibits for the following projects known as West Side Fire Station, Agnes Road, and Blakely Lane Extension, and the Colorado River Erosion Mitigation, at a cost of $34,400 attached as Exhibit B, as Exhibit B, excuse me, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This item, much like the one we just talked about, had to do with the hazardous mitigation, engineering work to submit for the application to the GLO. So if you remember, we changed this, I want to say back in, was it April or May? We went back and changed the actual, we added these items to the hazardous mitigation plan, right, so that we get extra points. And that was the Blakely Street Extension. That was the Agnes Street Extension. That was the West Side Fire Station. And we also added the Gill's Branch, which we spoke about. So we added all those projects to the plan, and then we submitted applications. And this is for the engineering work, for the applications for the Blakely Street Extension, the West Side Fire Station, and the Colorado River Erosion Project.
Councilmember Ennis?
I don't take any questions.
I think my question is basically for clarity... I think my question is basically for clarity's sake that this money will come out of the grant if it's awarded. Is that right?
This money will, we can recoup this if we're awarded, yes. If not, we'll have to, we'll pay the money.
We pay the money out of budget or?
That's correct.
Make budget amendment?
Yes, it'll be out of professional services budget that we currently have. This was something that was at the end of the year, and they actually pushed this for us until this fiscal year. So it's accounted for, but well, hopefully we'll be able to recoup it if we receive the grant.
So we'll be, we'll be on the plus side if the grant is awarded and that this $34,000 comes out of the grant. If we don't get the grant, we'll, we'll have to use the money.
That's right. We'll pay it upfront, we'll get reimbursed is the plan. And then the, again, we're paying for the work that they've provided.
Well, that was my question, since in the funding source it was not applicable. I just wanted to clarify that for folks who might be watching from home.
And I should have explained that better, that's my fault.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Jobe? I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. 11C is approved. Counsel, we have two items left, and they're both, for all practical purposes, mine. We are on item 12A, consider and adopt on first and final reading ordinance number 202102 as an emergency measure ratifying temporary ordered by the mayor in her capacity as the emergency management director in regards to the current local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety. Counsel, we've been using this for the COVID, but it's set up to take care of emergencies. I want to give you an extremely brief COVID update, and then we're going to talk about the storm last week. You know that we're service area O, you know that we had additional restrictions when we were above 15%. Currently, the hospitalizations as of 4:00 PM this afternoon were at 9.68. So we're doing really good with that. I told you the cases got crazy because they added, they were catching up a bunch of things, but currently we have 891 active cases, 7,300 recovered, 6,500 confirmed. Interestingly, last week during the storm, the call center that's coordinated by Bastrop Long-Term Recovery Team still took 53 calls, and they have now answered 3,807 calls, and 90% of the calls they got last week were about the vaccine. So hats off to them for taking care of things. Some other super quick, brief statistics, the state of Texas has been allocated 7.1 million doses, 5.6 million have been shipped, and 4.5 million doses have been given. In our Public Health Region 7, we talked about our area, but specific to Bastrop County. And if you get, if you are a person who has signed up on a waiting list and you've gone somewhere else to get your shot, they are tracking and reporting by your home address. So whether you got your shot here or not, so we count doses given in one deal, but on the, because we keep track, when they allocate doses, boy, we give all those doses out, but when you look up Bastrop County, it's reporting people who physically have a Bastrop County address. Does that make sense? So in Bastrop County, 5,093 people have gotten one dose, and 2,073 people have gotten two doses, and that means that 10.4% of the population over the age of 16 has gotten at least one dose. So that's kind of where we stand for Bastrop County. Of the clinics held to date, we have given 4,133 doses. That was the update I had on February 12th. They canceled the call on February 19th. I'll get better information this Friday, but that kind of gives you a feel for it. The one big, huge piece of information that I want to share is the evening, I think it was about 7:00 on Monday, February 15th. If you go to covac.info, C-O-V-A-C dot info, you go to register, and there is a spot, and I sent you guys that link, where you can put in your email, and they will send you a confirmation and confirm that you're on the waiting list. And when you get that email, you can also let them know, I've already gotten a shot somewhere else, or I don't need it anymore, or whatever. But the ability to have some sort of search engine efforts, that became available on February 15th. I wanted to mention that because I think folks had other things on their mind on last Monday night at around 7:00. So that's the COVID update. On the storm update, very briefly, you saw, city manager reported that I signed the emergency declaration on February 18th. My signature is only good for seven days, so I am asking for a motion to approve resolution R 2021-21, and that will be you guys ratifying and confirming that it was okay with you that I declared an emergency.
Move or move.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Councilmember Peterson for the confirmation and extension of the declaration of the local state of disaster. Alan, did I say all the right words?
Yes, mayor.
Excellent. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. One of the reasons that we do that is it may, is for Ms. Waldron. It is a lot easier if we have a declared emergency that we can tie to the FEMA number, and I was on a state call today, and there are some things that it's beneficial to the state if each of the taxing entities have declared their own disaster. So there's a lot of good reasons to do that, and all of them are in an effort to protect and help both the taxpayers' investment in city facilities, but also their individual investments. So thank you guys so much for that. I am not going to go over my summary because we've gotten a really good summary. If you have any other questions, I also did a council brief on kind of an end of the storm summary, so I would encourage folks to look at that. And counsel, we also have access to an email that we got from Fon Cullens about what you have to do if you have had 15% of damage by disaster on your property. Like I said, paperwork, pictures, and receipts. That brings us to the final action item, which is 12B, consider action to approve resolution number R 202118 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming board appointments of the mayor to the Cultural Arts Commission as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter and establishing an effective date. Colin, I think if we go to the next slide, you will see, you can go to the next one. There's a summary of what the Cultural Arts Commission is. I know that you guys all know that. And these are the people that I would like to appoint. These were recommended by Councilmember Ennis. These are folks that have participated in the formation of the committee, and I believe that they will do an excellent job in taking the first step towards getting our Cultural Arts Commission off the ground. Councilmember Ennis, would you like to add any comments?
Each one of these persons, each person on this list represents a constituency of the arts. Mr. Smith is a citizen-at-large. Lisa Holcomb represents the performing arts segment, which is the opera house. Casey Picas represents history. Phil Hurley represents musical performance. Michael Jones represents film. Maria Montoya Staten represents the arts in general, 2D art and sculpture. And Louis Portillo represents the B-I-S-D. That's it.
Do you want to make them?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Just another time, Councilmember Ennis, thank you so much for your involvement, and I'm glad to get these folks appointed so you have an opportunity to meet with them a couple times. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Counsel, this brings us to page four. Item 13, adjournment. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. We are adjourned at 8:49 PM. Be safe and have a good week. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Have a good one.
All right.